Six o'clock, good deal. Okay. I will call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. And if you will join in our salute to our nation.
What?
Oh, you said?
I'm sorry, yes.
All right.
Ready?
Ready? Begin.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
All right, roll of call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Boo Black?
Yes.
And for the record, Councilmember Nazrati and Councilmember Menez is absent.
Thank you for that. Uh, declarations of conflicts of interest, they only have to look. Uh, all right, there are none. Close session will be at the end of our meeting. Approval agenda as posted or amended.
Uh-oh. Yes, approve, uh, move to approve as, as, uh, as on the agenda.
Yeah, there you go.
Seconded.
Please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Boo Black?
Yes, it's a three O. And, uh, moving on to proclamations, we have one. As you can tell, we're wearing very cool shirts. We have one portrayed right there in front of the attorney, just in case you're missing it, us not standing up high enough. Uh, it is Go Green Week. Whereas the city of Turlock is committed to partnering with our schools to provide educational enrichment opportunities for Turlock's children. Go Green Week provides an opportunity for students, educators, government, industry, environmental organizations, and residents to work together for a prosperous and sustainable Turlock. Go Green Week will help produce the next generation of engaged citizens committed to preserving natural resources and enhancing the quality of life in Turlock. For the last 14 years, the city of Turlock and participating schools throughout Turlock have planted 290 trees, raised more than $14,500 for schools through recycling activities, and diverted approximately 21,634 pounds of waste from the landfill through the Go Green, Green Week program. Now, therefore, I, Amy Boo Black, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire city council and our citizens, do hereby proclaim March 14th through the 18th of this year as Go Green Week. Um, was there? Danae? There's more than just me here. I think we even have the author of the shirts, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Lupe Madrigal, and I am here tonight to present Go Green Week, um, which is scheduled for next week. Let's see if this works. There we go. Uh, Go Green Week brings a variety of environmentally themed presentations and activities to schools to provide educational enrichment opportunities focused on recycling, conservation, pollution prevention, and more. Some of these activities include tree plantings, live animal shows, a recycling and a T-shirt contest, classroom presentations, and tours of our water quality control facility. Over the past 14 years, the recycling contest has diverted approximately 21,634 pounds of waste from landfills and has raised over $14,500 for schools. Also, we have planted 290 trees thus far and, and intend to plant an additional, uh, 15 trees next week for a total of 305 trees. Turlock Transit is also a part of Go Green Week and has partnered with Stanislaus Regional Transit this year to give free rides all of next week, which is starting from March 13th through, uh, the 19th. Go Green Week wouldn't be possible without the hard work and dedication from all of the following individuals and organizations. First, the students and staff at each of the schools that are participating this year. All the vendors that travel from near and far to teach the students about the importance of going green. Also, Turlock Transit and Stanislaus Regional Transit for providing free rides. Parks and Recreation staff for their assistance with tree planting. Also, the water quality control staff for providing classroom presentations and tours of our water quality control facility to teach the students about our wastewater treatment process. The municipal services staff for planning this event, and TID for providing goodie bags for students to educate them on energy conservation. And last but not least, Alan and Jessie Marchant from Turlock Scavenger. Since the beginning, they have been a part of this program, and their partnership has been extremely valuable. So at this time, I would like to ask Jessie to come up and speak on their involvement with Go Green Week.
Whatever.
It's so confusing.
Okay, thank you, Lupe, council, staff, citizens of Turlock. Um, this is actually really exciting since we've had kind of a bit of a lull for the past few years, so, um, I'm really excited to get back into the swing of things. Um, I've been employed with our company for 17 years. I've lived it since I was born, but, um, just, um, seeing this program start and helping with, um, numerous employees who were in charge of it and then ultimately becoming char, in charge of it myself. This is something that is really, I feel, a core of what our business is about, being community members of Turlock, being community members with Stanislaus County. Um, one of the best things that I get to do is go and present to kids what I got to grow up with and really show them, um, what it, it means. Um, they are, they grow, they're growing up in a world where this is the norm. Um, I grew up when it was becoming the new thing, in a sense, and so it's just really, really awesome to see kids get to be able to learn and understand, um, what I get to do every day. And, um, then the kids are smart. They ask really tough questions and sometimes even gets me kind of a second to think about, you know, oh, well, I didn't think about that for a second. So, um, they're really, they, they really do, um, understand, they want to learn, and this is something that, uh, I hope we can continue doing. I hope this is a good jumpstart just back into the swing of things. So I just continue to thank you for, um, having us be able to be part of this. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jessie. And, uh, lastly, I want to congratulate, um, Arabella, who is a sixth grader from Juana Elementary, uh, for winning last year's T-shirt design contest. As you guys can all see, we are wearing her design on our T-shirts this year. Um, yes, so I would like to invite her to come up so we can present to her, um, one of these T-shirts.
So let's get a picture, anybody who's wearing a shirt, let's get a picture with Arabella. Very nice job. You're not wearing one? What the heck?
All right.
We haven't got time since.
Two, three. Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Great, well, that's the end for me. Just once again, thanks to everyone, um, that has made, uh, Go Green Week possible.
Uh-oh.
I'd just like to say, this, this program, as mentioned, has been going on for 14 years. This is Guadalupe's, uh, first effort in working on Go Green. She's only been with the city about two, three months.
Oh, nice.
Uh, she is taking over the reins from Danae Lawrence, who is departing our organization and going on to greener pastures.
Oh.
But I look forward to Guadalupe carrying this tradition on for another 20 years or so.
And why, why, wait, Dan, how come you're not dressed up in, uh, recycle man?
Where's your T-shirt?
That, it's in for repairs, it's getting a face.
Thank you for starting the, working on this, and we look forward to next year's. And awesome job, young lady, you did really good. All right, we have two presentations, Stanislaus 2030. Mr. Hayes, you're doing both?
Kind of.
Okay.
Do I go here or there? What's better?
Uh, here's fine, yeah, go ahead.
Clicker or button?
Thank you so much.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Boo Black, members of the council. Uh, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Petchelakis, thank you so much for having us tonight. Uh, my name is Jody Hayes, I serve as the county's chief executive officer. Truly my privilege to be here tonight talking about two specific initiatives that we want to make sure that we're introducing to the entire community. We've gone around to each one of the city councils here in Stanislaus County, um, to make sure that we just gave you a brief introduction, uh, to these two items, but to also provide you and the community an opportunity to know how you can connect with us, uh, going forward as the work progresses. Um, I'm going to be joined tonight by a couple of the partners that are, uh, working with us on this effort, or on these efforts first. Uh, we are on the, uh, agenda for two distinct presentations. One on the Stanislaus 2030 Economic Development Job Creation Initiative, and one on an initiative we refer to as Housing Stanislaus, about, uh, our housing situation here in Stanislaus County and what we could do working collectively together to improve that situation. Um, I want to start, um, with a couple of acknowledgements about those two particular items, and although they're separate, they really, really do, um, work very, very closely together for us. Um, I've been in this role as county CEO for about, um, four and a half years now, and from the onset, uh, our board of supervisors was very, um, specific in identifying a couple of areas that we would love to see, um, strategies and community-wide collaboration on, on a long-term basis. Um, things that we believe, uh, over generations, we can truly impact the quality of life here in Stanislaus County. And those two items are real simple, their jobs and their housing. And the basic concept that every member of our, uh, community can work in normal occupation in Stanislaus County and afford to live in a safe neighborhood. That's what it really all comes down to, that's the fabric of any great community, and that's what we're trying to make sure that we lend our support to and working collaboratively with everyone we can here in our community. I want to acknowledge that one of those individuals that was very, um, uh, uh, very upfront and their support of those two items being forefront on my agenda as CEO is our very own supervisor, Vito Cesa. And Vito's here, uh, this evening, and although he's not actively participating in this presentation, um, I offered, by the way, but he said, no, you've got it. He's seen us do this a couple of times. Uh, Vito and the rest of the board members have been very, very strong supporters of the information that you're going to see before you today, and, um, I know that he remains available to help, uh, follow up any questions you might have going forward in the future, and is working with us side by side. So, um, I'm going to go ahead and start with Stanislaus 2030 and acknowledge just what is this and why did we call it this name? Uh, this is our collaboration amongst businesses, uh, civic leaders, uh, government as well, any other stakeholders, where we want to deliver by this summer, which is a very aggressive timeframe, a very specific investment plan for regional economic development here in Stanislaus County. We're guided by a very important vision statement, I just want to read. We're going to go through some of these slides very quickly today, but this one I do want to spend just a moment reading. "We envision and commit to build a high-performing diverse economy to match our multicultural lifestyles and dreams for the future." So a very big, big, broad vision statement, but to support that vision statement, we have to have a lot of action and accountability that goes along with it, and that's what we want to try to share with you, um, this evening. So our desired outcomes are really based on this population size investment agenda. And what is an investment agenda for economic development? It's pretty simple, it's identifying, if you had a billion dollars drop out of the sky, and oftentimes Mary Ann will mention, if Warren Buffett showed up today and said, "I have a billion dollars to improve the economy of Stanislaus County, the city of Turlock, other places," where would you build, where would you put that investment specifically? And the truth is, if that, uh, opportunity was made available for us today, we have some plans we would break off the shelf, but we'd have to spend quite a bit of time, all collectively getting on the same page, with where is the best place to spend a billion dollars, or whatever that number is going to be, so that in the future, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, it's delivered the best possible outcomes in our community. This effort is intended to answer that question in advance and position us to then go seek those kinds of dollars that are now made available in ways that they have not been made available to communities in the past. So why create an investment agenda? Number one, clarity, making sure that we're all on the same page with what that future economy might look like, or investment strategies. Um, we have a lot to build off of from our current economy, but what can we do to meaningfully shape our future economy? Or are we just waiting for that economy to be shaped by someone else, mainly what flows over the Altamont Pass here into the Central Valley? Um, competition, there is a lot of money available now that has not been made available in the past, and we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars through state or federal resources that are new. These are things that have just not traditionally been available to local governments or local communities, and we see other communities that have already done some of this work are better positioned to compete for these dollars. So the truth is, we're behind. We would have loved to have been doing this work two years ago, uh, two and a half years ago, we started it, and for obvious reasons, we took a pause on that effort, and we rekindled all of this work about nine to 10 months ago, and that's gotten us here today where we are. Um, I'm going to go ahead and ask Mary Ann Cannon, who's the, uh, chief executive officer for the Stanislaus Community Foundation, to come up, and she's going to walk you through some of these other slides. We are going to go quickly because we're trying to keep it to 10 minutes for this part of the presentation, and Mary Ann will take over from there.
Thanks, Jody, Mayor Boo Black, city council members, so nice to see all of you. Just want to go over the process to date, we're about halfway through this process. Jody didn't mention, this is a 10-month sprint. We have a real sense of urgency. I'm, like many of you, tired of just sitting in meetings and admiring the problem. Uh, Stanislaus 2030 really gets at the root of what is the data telling us about our economy and how do we begin to improve it? So we've built momentum, and I'm going to share with you how we've built the infrastructure. We hired Brookings out of DC to do a deep data dive and analysis. That report will be made available at the end of this month. It's substantive and it's sobering, I will tell you. They do not paint a rosy picture of what's currently happening. I'm going to share some of the data in a moment, too, just brief highlights. Um, and now we're moving into strategy and development. Again, in 10 months, we want to arrive by the end of July with key action plans that we're going to seek investment on from federal and state sources. So my son played Little League for a while, and I remember the coach telling him, you know, these kids would, the balls would be coming and they'd just be frozen, and nobody had their catcher's mitt in the, in the air, and he'd say, "You guys got to get your catcher's mitt on the, if you don't have your catcher's mitt in the air, you're going to catch zero balls." Not only do we want to get our catcher's mitt up in the air and secure federal and state funding for projects, we want to be running towards the ball, and we think Stanislaus 2030 is our best chance to do that. So who's involved? We have a leadership council of 200-plus folks from all areas of the community. We were, uh, all communities, so Turlock, Patterson, Houston, Modesto, its demographic representation, its nonprofits, its education, private sector leaders. Uh, that group will meet three times over the course of the initiative, they've already met twice. Uh, they'll probably meet one more time, maybe even two, uh, really to sort of help us map out what we may be missing. So they're giving us sort of the eyes and ears to the whole community. The exec committee is made up of 30 leaders, you're going to see their names in a minute. I will tell you, the community foundation raised $250,000 from those business leaders to work with the county. The county committed through the board of supervisors about $450,000 in ARPA funds, and several cities have also committed a small, uh, portion of their ARPA funds for this planning process. Um, but that executive committee is really at the helm of this work. We also have an elected officials roundtable that all of you have been invited into. They've met twice to be briefed on all of this. We believe the cities play a critical role, obviously, in our economy, and certainly in terms of licensing and permitting for small businesses specifically. Uh, the backbone team is a blended backbone of the community foundation, the county CEO's office, and then our consulting team, and then the residents of Stanislaus County, they're really at the heart of this work, and we are actually engaging them in very different ways through a consulting firm we've hired of local young leaders, uh, called Debrief, and they're going through, and they've actually already interviewed several small business owners in Turlock, and, um, they're hosting a series of focus groups and community forums. This is the executive committee, you'll notice there's several Turlock residents as part of this group. We're very careful to seed this group with folks from the private sectors, you can see, education, and when we say private sector, we mean both small business and local corporations, and then education plays, obviously, a critical role in our economy as well. Here's some of the public and private support that I mentioned. Um, and this is sort of one of the frameworks we're using that we have to sort of think about economic success as the end unit, not just being the viability and vibrancy of our companies and small businesses, but our residents should be directly benefiting from our economy. That's a bit of a mind shift for traditional economic development wonks, I will tell you. So what we're seeking to do here is really understand that it's not just about job count. I encourage you, when your economic development come, department comes to you and says, "We have X amount of jobs creating Turlock," I want you to ask about the quality of those jobs. What are the actual wages that those jobs will be paying? And I will share with you in a moment, we are woefully lacking across the county. And we're not the only county in the Central Valley struggling with this, with wages that actually pay a living wage. And you're going to be surprised at what that living wage is in Stanislaus County, uh, based on the Brookings assessment. When we talk about economic success, we're talking about jobs created, expanded output from those jobs, so growth, prosperity, who's participating in our economy? What's the productivity level? What's the average wage? And then inclusion, you know, how are people getting opportunities for upward mobility in the community? How are they seeking training? What are the barriers to that training? A lot of people say they want a job. If they can't get affordable childcare to get into those jobs or those trainings, we all could sit here and talk until we're blue in the face. Uh, so addressing some of those issues as well. So here's some of, uh, what we're beginning to understand about our economy. Half of the population, actually over half, struggles to make ends meet. Um, they're not even meeting the basic level of economic sufficiency, and one-third of our jobs, uh, provide pathways to prosperity. So I will tell you, I'll just let the cat out of the bag, the living wage job in Stanislaus County in 2022 is $27 an hour. That's a wealth-building wage, that means they have enough money left over to actually save for the next month just a bit. But that's what's needed for one child and one adult to afford a house or an apartment, to pay for their food, to pay for their gas today. Um, so we are actually missing 40,000 jobs in our current job count that pay that living wage. So I'm not saying every job needs to be at $27 an hour. I'm saying we don't actually have the mix, those are the jobs we're missing. And it's happening across this country, it's the hollowing out of middle-scale, middle-wage jobs that we're seeing very much reflected in our community, too. And we're actually underperforming other cities in the Central Valley. We're falling far behind Fresno and Stockton, uh, in female minority-owned small businesses, and actually, small businesses in general, we're actually behind cities, uh, that are neighbors of ours. So here's some of the data, you could see, we have tw, uh, 47% of our families are actually, would we consider self-sufficient, they're not relying on any external sources to make ends meet. Um, we have, uh, 14% in non-working families, those are people that are retired, and then we have almost 40% that are actually struggling to make ends meet. So you could see there what that looks like. And then here are the jobs, you know, when we talk about good jobs, those pay that $27, $28 an hour, they offer health insurance, and they actually provide upward mobility in terms of career pathways. The promising jobs, that's what we're missing right now, uh, 40,000 jobs that are other that really should be moved into that promising jobs category. But that does require, as Jody said, a focus on traded sector jobs. So we have a great, you know, I sell you coffee, you sell me back something, right? You wash my car, I sell you coffee. That's what I would consider a locally-serving job, that's great. Um, we don't have traded sector jobs actually pull money in from outside the community because they're producing a commodity that's of value outside this community. The, the major, obviously, industry that does that for us is ag, and that's critical to our economy. And so whatever we do in, in terms of creating another industry cluster, this won't surprise you, needs to be built on the viability of ag, but taking it forward, so building on our current ag base. We also need to really look at our workforce capabilities. We've interviewed a lot of employers in the last few months, and their number-one complaint is we don't have a skilled, trained workforce. So that begs the question, how do we, um, work with education partners to add more skilled workforce to our community? How do we get, um, MJC specifically to be more responsive to our employers? And then, obviously, developing a specific vision, as, uh, Jody said. So here are some of the implications, I'm not going to go through all of them. You do have the slide deck, happy to share more with you. You will be getting a fuller report at the end of this month. Um, this is just sort of another lens we're viewing, we talked about industry clusters, we're focused on that, the talent pipeline, innovation in the form of small business dynamism, infrastructure is built environment and broadband, so our roads, our, you know, water is a big part of that. And then governance, who's going to hold all of, all of us accountable to what we say we're going to do? What's next here? You could see, uh, we're going to dra, we're going to send out the report, uh, we're going to synthesize that input, we are forming work groups. Uh, one is going to be focused on ag and ag industry clusters, one's going to be focused on small business, one's going to be focused on industry talent exchanges, how we bolster that. Um, so those work groups are going to be launched, and they have exactly 10 weeks to come up with key strategies and action plans that then we will take those plans and actually send them out to the community with, uh, investments attached to them, saying, well, this is the money we need to raise, this is how we're going to get our catcher's mitt up in the air. Here's how you can help as Turlock city council members. We really urge you, if you haven't done so already, to attend the elected officials roundtable. We will have more meetings to brief you. Uh, we really encourage you to take, if you haven't already, and I know you guys are wonderful at this, to understand how the economic development function works within your city and really think through, um, what we're hearing from small businesses, the permitting and licensing process, how do we really fine-tune that for all our cities? Um, here's how you can stay in touch with us, and again, my door is always open. I'd love to talk to any of you that are interested in this. When the data report comes out, I welcome your phone calls, emails, texts. We're all very accessible, because it is, as I mentioned, sobering and substantive, but it's absolutely the right work to do right now. I think it's, it's absolutely, given what we've experienced in COVID, the communities that are going to prosper in the next decade and beyond are getting really intentional about how they're going after federal and state funding. So I just want to end there, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
And we're just going to pause for a quick second before we do housing to see if there are any questions about the materials we've covered so far.
Questions from Mr. Cannon or Mr. Hayes? Awesome.
You're off the hook, thank you very much. And then I'm going to pivot, I'll start the introduction as we, um, uh, change out the slide deck here. Um, so next, as I mentioned, we're going to talk about, uh, um, housing, and, um, spoiler alert for this presentation, I'll just tell you now, and I think we've literally written it into the presentation. Uh, this effort is not about the county trying to tell cities how to grow, when to grow, where to grow. Um, there's a recognition that, you know, what works for the city of Turlock may not work for the city of Riverbank, or Houston, Modesto, or others. So this effort is really a recognition that, um, you know, for many reasons that we could spend time talking about, um, uh, you know, future housing is not going to be developed in the unincorporated areas. That's not where our communities are going to be built out, um, for many reasons. And, um, it's in partnership with the nine cities that will collectively form and shape, um, the future of our broader Stanislaus County community that this effort, um, was launched and initiated. It really is our best effort to pull together, um, with the help of some great consultants who have, who have done a lot of work, um, on challenges like this in broad regional areas. It's our best effort to get the best ideas on the table, to learn from one another, and to ask ourselves, is there anything that we could be doing, um, better in order to produce and make available, um, uh, quality housing, uh, throughout our community at all of the different various levels that are needed? And I just want to mention what those are, and I want to talk about what, what part of the housing continuum we're actually focused on here. So some of you may have seen this slide before, but it's our best effort to just describe i- in a very generic fashion, what is the housing continuum? On the very left side, you have emergency shelters that may support someone for one day or six months, and, and in today's world, even beyond that sometimes. And then you have various steps up the housing ladder that go into transitional housing or permanent supportive housing, where individuals are into a permanent home environment, but they need help, they need additional support to stay and maintain in that environment, so we do some wraparound services for them. Um, workforce housing has gotten a lot of attention recently. Some cities are doing some very unique things around, uh, trying to develop, uh, what is called workforce housing to meet that very need that Mary Ann was just talking about. You saw that slide that showed, how many of our families today have one or two working adults in the family and are still struggling to get by with basic necessities? And the statistics are all there, you'll see them in the Brookings report when that gets released in the next, um, uh, probably month or two here. So workforce housing is certainly around that. You have traditional affordable housing projects. I know you've been, um, supporters of a lot of that, uh, in, in the city of Turlock. I see it frequently on your agendas as well, so you're very familiar with that. And then, of course, there's the standard, uh, rental housing market and homeownership. This effort of Housing Stanislaus is intended to focus on the upper half of this housing continuum. This is what we referred to in this slide as a future regional housing strategy. Um, we have a separate strategy and a separate environment we're working on with homeless-related matters called the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance. Um, there's always a seat at the table for the city of Turlock, uh, in those discussions, and we welcome your participation there, uh, trying to work on one common vision and agenda for homelessness. Um, but that's not what this effort is about. This effort is about the upper half of the housing continuum, recognizing that if we do a good job on the upper half of this housing continuum, it supports the entire process, all the way down to the lowest level. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and invite Alan Lang up. Uh, Alan is with a firm called Valley Vision, um, and they have done some tremendous work, mainly in the Sacramento region, um, pulling together partners from a variety of, uh, stakeholder backgrounds, including civic, uh, uh, engagement, uh, government, uh, pr, private, public, uh, you name it. And they pull people together to solve difficult challenges. And certainly, housing, um, in any place in California, I think qualifies as a dis, difficult challenge. So, uh, Alan, it's all yours, he'll take you through the rest of this presentation. He'll take you through the rest of this presentation. I'm going to stay here for questions.
Thank you, Jody, and thank you, Mayor Booblack, and city council members. Very happy to be here today to share information about the housing Stanislaus effort. Jody did a great overview, so I'm going to, I think, move fairly quickly through some of the details here, but do want to note about the reason. You know, why is the housing Stanislaus effort needed? I think we're seeing in, whether it's through newspapers, through everyone that we're talking to, meaning us collectively, what is happening right now with the housing market and how difficult it is to find housing that is appropriate, that is affordable, regardless of income level of the household. And there are a few things that are driving that. One is the ongoing increased demand. Population has grown, continues to grow, and over the next 10 years is projected to grow by about another 50,000 residents throughout Stanislaus County. That's about a 10% increase over current population size. That is paired against inadequate housing supply. What we've seen impact Stanislaus County, more so than many other counties throughout California, to be honest, is a rapid reduction in the rate of housing development since the mortgage crisis that occurred in the 2008, '09, '10, et cetera, time period. Just to quantify that, I'll give a number of, in 2004, there were about 4,500 housing units developed in 2004. In 2019, the last data that is readily available right now, there were about 800. So you just get that comparison of how shortfall, how much of a shortfall there has been in housing development for the past decade or longer. And it's really materializing now, and people are seeing that in extremely low vacancy rates. Actually, housing vacancy rate throughout Stanislaus County is below 5% right now, which is considered the low end of a healthy market. And that's resulting in people either having to move to housing in locations that is not where they want to live, get housing types that maybe aren't the type of housing that they want, or, and this is happening probably most frequently, paying more for housing than what they and their families can afford. We're seeing that in what is called the housing burden. There are, as far as renters, about 55% of the population of renters are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, which is the, again, kind of the threshold that's used of what's an appropriate amount of housing, or appropriate amount to go to housing. And that is taking away from their abilities to either afford life essentials like food, medicine, other things that are needed, but also taking away from other things that could be helping drive the economy, the retail business, the entertainment, other things that people might want to invest their money in or spend their money on other than housing. So it has a lot of consequences that are impacting us now, and it's going to continue to get worse as we move forward. So that is why we're really trying to push and, from the county standpoint, really advance the housing Stanislaus effort. So talking through just the intent, as Jody said upfront, this is not an effort for the county to instruct cities or tell cities what to do, how to build, how to grow, but rather an effort to try and get a really collective understanding of what are the challenges we're facing? How can we work towards this together so that all the cities, the county, as well as the other stakeholders involved in housing, the housing developers, the funders, the financiers, housing advocates, everybody that's involved in that housing effort can really work together toward some common goals, common priorities, and be able to move that forward in a way that is going to be beneficial for all, and done so in a coordinated fashion so that we can see those results throughout the county and all the cities, all the incorporated cities as well. Our desired outcomes on this, it really begins with that shared understanding of what those needs are. That really lands itself in some of that data that I mentioned, but there's a lot more of it. And really using that to really have collective discussion, collaborative discussion around what can we do together? What do we need in terms of priorities, policies, investments that we're pursuing or bringing into the region? And how do we do that together so that it is a, I'll say, by force, collective force, we're really able to draw additional resources in, we're able to move forward with some best-practice policies and share that information amongst all of our cities and our county in terms of housing development and how we pursue that. And ultimately, we do want to land on some very specific projects, policies, and priorities that we are working towards together. The structure on how we're moving forward with this, actually somewhat similar to the housing Stanislaus structure, or I'm sorry, the Stanislaus 2030 structure, not quite at the same scale in terms of the number of people on the leadership groups, but do have a technical advisory team that we're working very closely with. It is represented by staff from the different cities, as well as county staff, housing developers, housing advocates, community groups, nonprofit organizations, funders, and others that are involved in this, really to provide that expertise. They know this, they do this every day. How can we get their best ideas? How can we help inform what is going to be the best solutions? Also have an executive team that is the county executive, the city managers, that is, they've only met once so far, it's just kind of the setting-the-stage meeting, but we are getting near a point where that'll start coming in to a, excuse me, a more regular kind of communication effort to start sharing, here's what our findings are, here's what policies are under consideration, how can we really advance this, what is of interest, how can we vet these ideas? And then, of course, the housing stakeholders. So really broad groups from, especially with the development community, but a number of others at all that really influence and are impacted by housing. We've done so far in terms of timeline, you can see on this slide just kind of the stakeholder engagement, a number of interviews, focus groups that have been done with these groups really get their perceptions on what are the challenges, what are the opportunities, what are the desires for what housing should look like, and have gathered that information. And that's really kind of where we're at now with this process. We've gone through a lot of that information collection, as well as identified promising practices from elsewhere, and are now starting to talk about what are the solutions? How do we move this forward? And want to team this, again, we're going to be doing, hopefully in the relatively near-term future, kind of community surveying to get more just resident input, and are looking forward to, and you can see this on the next slide, as we start to put the visioning framework together, are looking to hold a housing summit in, you know, probably the early stages of summer, you know, a few months out, like late May, early June is what we're anticipating now. That could still flex a little bit, but that's kind of what the idea is. That we'll be able to present forward and have really opportunity for some community dialogue around what these ideas are, what resonates with the community, what do people think are going to be most impactful, and get additional feedback from residents, from stakeholders that are involved, so that we can then finalize and really frame for presenting to the county, coming back to all of your respective cities. Here are the ideas that really seem to galvanize the community, that we want to move forward, and hopefully we'll have some good, some additional dialogue at that point as well. We also just want to flag on this, we know that the county and all the cities are either in the, just beginning the process of, or maybe about to begin the process of, the housing element update. So we're hoping that the information that we're pulling together now will help inform that as well, as, you know, some important data and information to be able to share and can help feed into the housing element update as that takes place over the next few years. So with that, that is, again, a high-level overview of the process and what we're looking to achieve. So my contact is on this slide, but would love, if there are any questions, any feedback that you have now, would love to take it.
Comments? Go ahead.
Thank you so much to everyone who's been able to come up and present the information. It's absolutely exciting, especially for someone like me who plans to be here for a very long time. And the decisions that we are making today are the ones that are, we're going to be tremendously felt in the next few decades, just like the ones that we, the effects that we feel today are results of the decisions made beforehand or lack thereof. So I appreciate this tremendously, and I also understand, when you say, coming back to councils, and you really want to make sure we're not taking away local control, you want to have it be kind of a guiding document or a collaborative effort, and data that is just the facts of the situation, what we're dealing with at a regional level, which at the end of the day is really only going to help us in terms of capitalizing of these funds that will be available from the larger entities. But my, the only criticism, not criticism, but the only worry that I really have is when you come to the local bodies and they, and you want to tell, hey, this is a great project, let's get behind on this, the staffing that's there to maybe help with writing grants or, you know, be in charge of, you know, overseeing a program like that, that's always a limitation with local and smaller communities. So, and I'm not sure how quickly that can change to keep, you know, up with this report coming back. So will this report also include, or maybe will this board also include, or the county be able to provide resources for those smaller communities, or at least provide a plan for how they can hop onboard with other communities, be able to take a more regional approach? Could you speak to that point?
Yeah, and I think that Jody will probably have some comments as well, but quickly, I'll note at the high level, absolutely the funding piece and resources piece is a massive element of this. We've heard through all the key informant interviews and stakeholder groups that, you know, the resources, whether it's at planning staff level, cities or counties, that they are overburdened as-is. There is often, you know, turnover and other things that occur. So that's something that does need to be addressed if you want to have a very forward-thinking and forward-moving effort. So what I don't have yet for you in specificity is, where are those dollars going to come from? But it is very clear that that is going to have to be a very deliberate effort of how do we get some resources that can really help move some of these ideas forward? So that's been very clear so far. And unfortunately, at this exact moment in time, I don't have a specific answer of, or the magic of, yeah, and here's the money to do it, but it will be an important piece of this.
I just want to say real clear, if there's an investment agenda that comes out of this that says, our problem is funding, if we just had some funding, it would really make a meaningful impact and our difference, we're going to want to know that. I have clear direction support from our board to consider the role that the county may want to play to fund items that need to be funded. So we'll have to see. We're just in the abstract right now, but we'll see.
Did we, for our stakeholders, did we ask the BIA GV to be one of the stakeholders?
Yeah, they are. They've been very, very involved, a lot of good input and feedback coming from the Building Industry Association. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Move on to public participation. This is a time set aside for members of public to directly address the city council on any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council for five minutes. Who would like to come forward? I have a list here of Mr. Treewiler.
Yes, council staff and Turlock citizens, Milt Treewiler. I want to discuss the proposed homeless plan. There was a lot of information in this plan that was presented, and one of the things was building and implementing a plan to reduce homelessness by respecting all persons who make Turlock their home, the homeless and the home-housed alike. And this is great. And it said, there's a need to implement a Turlock plan to address the multiple needs of the unsheltered homeless by respecting and assisting this unsheltered population while also respecting and addressing the desire of Turlock residents to live in a safe, clean, and hospitable community. Also, good ideas. The next one I've gotten read, I've got yes and no, not really that bad, but anyway. Another one is providing a bed for all those who need shelter, who deserve shelter. I don't like that term, who deserves shelter. Every human being deserves shelter. Every human being, if you go back to our ancestors who lived in caves in Africa and Europe, they deserve shelter. Everyone in Turlock deserves shelter. And even the Yocut Indians, Native Americans, who lived here for thousands of years, right here in this area, the Central Valley, they had their shelter, they made their shelter. You can still find a lot of their homes and a lot of their settlements around the area. So again, the next, providing help for those in need of shelter who desire help. Everyone desires help. Yes, we have mental illness issues, I'll get to that, but everyone wants to see something. They want a place to stay. And you see them downtown, they find a nice place they like, and they get kicked out of it. But of course, it's downtown, it's interrupting the city, but okay. But they desire someplace to stay. Focusing on the goal of providing help for those who want help. Here we go again, we're putting these preconditions in here. Everyone wants help, whether they're going to admit it or not, if they're total, if they have a mental illness that prevents them from wanting that, that's a little bit of different story, but most of them want it. In short, providing beds and access to healthcare, mental health treatment, and other options. We will make considerable strides in compassionately dealing with the unsheltered homeless population. And again, I want to say, they want the help, and we don't want to put preconditions on it. Just give them the help. Okay, these are good things here. The city should continue to support the Turlock Gospel Mission and the We Care as the primary providers of emergency shelters in our city. The committee found that our Turlock churches have participated and are willing to continue to participate in alleviating homelessness. We believe the city should collaborate with the churches and other religious institutions when they choose, like to assist in continuing to do this. That's good. Here I have a little bit of a question. The primary contact between city employees and the unsheltered is undertaken by the Turlock Police Department under the Community Assistance Response Engagement. I believe that we should have, this program should be under the Turlock Police Department, but I don't believe that we should have sworn officers doing this type of work. I think we should come up, you know, have a department. We've got a beautiful building over there, the Public Safety Building, we've got billions of rooms in it, hundreds of square feet over there. We've got plenty of places to put a staff that would deal with homelessness that weren't necessarily sworn officers, but they were people who knew what they were doing, they knew how to work with the homeless. Okay, then another thing, by expanding the circle of city employees trained to interact and provide positive manner with the unsheltered homeless. This training should include efforts to reconnect the unsheltered homeless with family and other important persons in their life. Of course it should. That should be number one. Turlock-based Genesis Behavioral Center has offered free of charge to train city employees on behavioral intervention, addressing the unique health and mental health challenges of our unsheltered homeless population. Holy cow, the time is flying, isn't it? I'm not as fast as these other guys. Are assisted in facing the homeless by, oh, okay, sorry. Here's a very good idea here. Believe in preventing homelessness among family units is easier than reversing homelessness once it occurs. So yes, if we have, if the police department has in their building, or in, under their thing, people who would know what to do with homelessness when it was, before it actually happened. I guess I'll have to continue this in another meeting, but it's been nice talking to you, and I sped this up, I know that.
Thank you, Mr. Treewiler. The other card I have is for Mary Lou? Yes, sorry.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to let you know if it's possible, if it's Maria Ramos's staff, can translate in Spanish, that's, so have enterprise paperwork, please. That's what I want to say there. Thank you.
Anyone else who didn't fill out a card? Mr. Kiesa. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Puffer caught you. You got to be faster.
Hi. I had Bob Puffer, Turlock. Two things, I'd like, if someone could give us an update on the Golden State repaving. I saw that they got the sidewalks finished, and kind of my understanding that the road would either be torn up or even finished by now. Kind of like to know what's happening with that. The other one is, I'd like to have item G of the consent calendar polled. I think that was a public hearing or an action item last meeting, and it got polled to this one, and I don't know why it got put on the consent calendar, but I'd kind of like to hear what was said on that. Thank you.
Real quick, did you have some questions, Mr. Puffer? So when we start it, they can, the staff can do their presentation in regard to G?
On G? No. I just want to hear what's going on with it. But it is. Thank you.
Supervisor Kiesa?
Hey, good evening, mayor, fellow council members, Mr. Wilson, welcome. I know that we've talked a little bit. Mr. Petrelakis, Vito Kiesa, Stanislaus County Supervisor, representing the Turlock area. And we just wanted to go over a few things, report on a few things today. The Board of Supervisors did away with the public health order, although most people probably wouldn't recognize much of a difference because when the masks went away, everyone thought the public health order went away, but we did do away with it probably a few weeks too late. Perfect timing for this, the presentation that you had earlier. Stanislaus County, as a part of our ARPA funds, we're receiving about $107 million total. We've received half of that. We're committing $50 million of that to infrastructure, and the Board of Supervisors are going to go into the county islands and to some of the communities. We get to pick two spots apiece. I want to go to the Kenwood Mitchell area of Turlock County Island, but we're looking at doing listening sessions out in the community, and so you'll hear more about that. We haven't determined exactly when we're going to do that, but it's going to be very soon. The grand jury, you may not know, or for the public, the civil grand jury does investigations into things. They look at our jail to make sure that we're doing things correctly, that we're following rules, and they're taking applications now, anyone, and so we're looking for regional areas to be covered. So I'm asking people from District 2, especially in Turlock, to be represented. There is a lottery system. After you fill out your application, when they narrow it down to 30, then they do a lottery for the last 19 actual grand jury members. You have to be a citizen in that area for a year, you have to be over 18. There are more things on the list, not being a bad citizen. There are more things on the list, not being a bad citizen being some of them, but you can go look. Go onto STANCT, which is short for court, STANCT.org, and fill out an application. And I'm going to try and continue to harp on this. You're seated July through June of next year, and they require 20 hours per month of your time. So please do that. The care team, I, Milt had just talked about the care team. Turlock has a care team. It's a sworn officer. The county also has a care team, but it's a little different, Community Assessment/Response Engagement. I went out with the team here in Turlock about three Wednesdays ago. They're typically down here on Wednesday. And our care team is made up of public health nurse, mental health clinicians, the community service agency, and some other ancillary folks. We went to the homeless encampment on West Main, south of West Main, on the east side of the freeway. And we did a couple, we went to the park by the fairgrounds. Which one is it?
Broadway?
Broadway. We went to Broadway Park. We went to the railroad tracks right by, between Golden State and, is it First Street? And that area. And we did put three people into hotels, got some mental health medication. It is pretty amazing, a little more aggressive than what our community outreach team does in trying to help out. The care team is specific to people, a list of people that were given to us by your PD, Police Department. It was a pilot program, started in Modesto, but now we've gone countywide. So you, any one of you that want to go out on Wednesdays, they're typically down in the Turlock area, I would recommend it. Item number five, Amtrak On-Demand Bus Service. I know you guys are very aware of this, but Wayne York and your own Vice Mayor has been instrumental. Vice Mayor Franco sits on StanCOG. We just okayed $1.2 million for a pilot project for on-demand service. If you've ever ridden, and I think I have enough time to tell the story, if you've ever ridden Amtrak and you end up at the Denair Station, there was no way to get anywhere. And the story goes that a Hanford City Councilman was coming to a meeting that I was having at CSU Stan. They got dropped off. They called for a taxi. There was no taxi service in the morning. They called for an Uber. There was no one on duty. So someone came out of Merced Uber, picked him at the Denair Station to bring him to CSU Stan. This has fixed that last mile gap, which is pretty exciting. Lastly, I want to talk about Major L. The revenues are coming a lot higher, but you know that because city revenues are coming in on sales tax a lot higher. It looks like through seven months, we're about $4.6 million ahead. So we were expecting $38 million on an ongoing basis. That's what we wrote into the $960 million Major L 25-year plan. And I think we went $43.5 million the first year, $45.5 million, $45.5 million, $56 million last year, and we're headed for $60 million plus this year. So much beyond our expectation. Again, it's local dollars. Make sure you program that. I know you guys have been really on top of the roads project, but always great to be here. And if you have any questions, it is Taco Tuesday, and I promised them I was taking them out to Memos tonight, so.
That's why they're waiting.
I know. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else who didn't raise their hand? Mr. Braggrum in the back. Enjoy Memos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. Mr. Helios Dayspring was slated to be the majority owner of the Natural Healing Center in their RFQ Development Agreement and CUP applications back in 2019 and 2020. Here is a quote from his bio in the applications. When the other cannabis businesses were operating in the shadows without paying taxes, Helios Dayspring raised the bar by implementing self-regulatory policies and complying with all tax law, evident in his eight-plus years of tax history and his operations running with the highest standards in the industry. End of quote. We now know this was a lie. I quote from multiple news reports. Quote, "Dayspring has pled guilty in federal court to committing fraud by underreporting his personal income on his 2014 to 2018 federal tax returns to the amount of at least $3.4 million." Dayspring also admitted offering a $100,000 bribe in 2017 to the mayor of Grover Beach in exchange for two dispensary licenses. Dayspring admitted to bribing San Luis Obispo County Supervisor Adam Hill to further his cannabis businesses. The bribes to Hill allegedly began in the fall of 2016 and continued through November 2019. In March 2020, Hill attempted suicide, just hours after FBI agents raided his office at the county government center, his home in Shell Beach, and the home of Helios Dayspring. Where am I? Hill attempted suicide, again, attempted suicide and was found dead in his home on August 6th, August 6th, 2020. Recently, the mayor of San Luis Obispo resigned after less than a year on the job amid allegations she took gifts from Mr. Dayspring. Santa Barbara County is working to terminate Dayspring's ability to farm on his six marijuana farms in its jurisdiction. In November of 2021, San Luis Obispo city staff revoked the NHC's dispensary permit because Dayspring had not disclosed his criminal activity and lied about owning the underlying property during the application process. End of quote. I also found that the largest minority investor in a NHC is suing Mr. Dayspring alleging that he diverted millions in company funds to himself and used some to try to stave off IRS and FBI investigations. And finally, quote, "Helios Dayspring transferred ownership of Natural Healing Center of San Luis Obispo into the name of his live-in girlfriend, Ms. Garcia, in October 2020 before he pled guilty to tax fraud and bribery charges." End of quote. This was after, I note that this was after the September 22nd, 2020 city council meeting here in Turlock, where NHC was granted a development agreement and CUP. And I seem to remember that we were told by Mr. White that the transfer of operating permits would not be permitted. As you may have noted, that many of these criminals' acts happened before Dayspring's application for a dispensary in Turlock. Also, according to their development agreement, they had six months to start their operating their dispensary in Turlock, and at the end of this month, it will be one year and six months. They still have not opened. Mr. City Manager, the public asks that this be investigated, and if Dayspring hid his criminal activity on his application and has not fulfilled the obligations of the development agreement, we demand it be canceled. I also believe that you should investigate why we paid for a background check on the owners of NHC, but evidently, none of this was discovered, even though I found numerous news articles talking about Mr. Dayspring's allegedly illegal activities dating back years before. Given this very apparent oversight, how do we know they properly investigated the principles involved in the other cannabis dispensaries we have let into Turlock? Do we really want the FBI investigation to come to Turlock? Like a previous council member pled with the council to not sell the sov Turlock for a few pieces of silver. Thank you.
Anyone else who didn't? Yes, sir.
Thank you, my chairman, members of the city council. You're not allowed to make a public comment with the county. Mr. Hayes did the report, so I want to speak a little bit about that. And what did the presentation say, the race and the geographic area that are going to be represented? But when you say race, meaning the high majority, the entity five itself is a race, is white race. So it means the parasympathy, because we have a lot of ethnicity groups in this county. So it's not clear what you guys are talking about. The other part is the issue of the executive order 13A95, where they say the, every federal grant of money that's coming to the county cities is supposed to go to the representation in advancing of the racial equity in every city and county, and you receive federal funds. Sometimes you receive federal funds. The other issue in regard to the housing, it's a big job for the consultant to come here to the city, in different cities, to pretend that he going to try to work with the builders and the industry and the real estate people to do housing. If the cities in the county is not conforming or compliant with the housing element in the cycle of eight years, and all the time the cities and counties are behind, three, four years behind regard to the low and very low-income families' housing issue to be developed or implemented. So the only people that really have the opportunity to buy or have houses are the middle-class and upper-middle-class residents. The rest, no. So it's a very illusion to say that we're going to help to build houses in the community. Look, the problem that we have of the house, of the homeless is big. You're not going to stop for the next 20 years. I remember the governor recommended 10-years-plan to finish the homeless. We were now 15 years, we're still not finished. And going to make money, more money to the homeless because we need it and help the human beings. So the illusion that they're going to work with communities and groups is not there. The majority of the members, they were a very selective group, they're really not very encountered with the unserved and very low-income and minority representation. You see the list. The majority are professionals or owners of business, not the committed community. We have no representation for the low-income families, no representation for homeless or different groups in that community that the guys selected. So I see, I think that the illusion that you're going to come out and work with the cities, the cities like Mrs. Larson say, you don't have the staff to do the housing element. You have Houston, different small cities, you cannot hire a consultant to pay to do the housing element. So they're very behind. So that's the key issue. Even the Stanley County have less employees for the last two years to work in the planning department, and they're looking for more and not applying. So I think the issue of pretend that we're going to resolve the jobs in housing, what we know for the last 20 years, the people behind in job skills are the minorities. Because the majority are dropping from the school or not finished, the high school or not have the technician skills. So you are very behind to do. Many people go outside of this county to find jobs because you don't have jobs here. So the illusion that we're going to have jobs in housing is big lie. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, let's close the public comment. How are we doing, Mr. Wilson, in regard to having something to answer questions that are coming up here online the next day? Is something activated yet for that?
Go ahead.
Okay. We're working on it. Okay. Motion waiving reasons of all ordinances, there aren't any. Consent calendar, there is a green sheet via item 6F, as in Frank. Item 6G, as in George, will be pulled. Other than that, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Can we have a motion in a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes 3-0. Item 6G, as in George, authorizing the city manager to begin implementation of recommendations for the GIS. Do you want to speak to that or someone else, Mr. Wilson?
Matt.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Madden. We're very saddened that you didn't wear your getup today. He's recycling man normally. You're missing out.
My apologies, Mayor. Maybe next year.
All right. Let's do it.
He broke it.
Come out of your salary there.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Apparently, a member of the public was interested in additional information relative to item 6G, which is the Geographic Information System, which is an acronym for Geographic Information System, GIS. In 2019, the city of Turlock hired Vestra Consulting Firm that did a strategic plan relative to our, the city's GIS system. Originally, it was established in 2004, and over the last 15 years of that timeframe, we had been using a sole-source software program for that system. City staff and the consultants spent a lot of time inputting data and developing a GIS, which is, if you don't know what GIS is, it's like a stack of glass plates, and on the bottom plate is a map of the whole city. And the plate above that is the infrastructure that's underground. Plate above that is the property lines. Plate above that is the address, so on and so forth. So you can extract data from, if you really dive deep into a GIS system, from soil type all the way up to how tall the houses are on each individual property or commercial development. So it's a very valuable tool to utilize throughout the United States. And unfortunately, our system began to lag behind, primarily due to the software that we had permission to use. That particular owner of that software decided he didn't want to continue updating it anymore. Staff time was an issue. We had, I think, maybe three quarters of staff person working on GIS, in addition to city staff feeding that person information to enter into the GIS program. So as a result of the strategic plan that the consultant hired in 2019 developed, they came up with a five-year plan, and it had a number of recommendations. It's included in your packet. You were, actually, it was in your packet last council meeting, but there were a number of errors. So within the packet, there is a number of recommendations. Primarily, there was three options, was hire a full-time employee as well as, actually, two full-time employees and a consultant to perform work relative to the GIS to get it up to a standard that was acceptable and utilized, to be utilized by city staff. The other was hire one full-time employee as a GIS coordinator and retain a GIS consulting firm to provide support for that individual. And thirdly, actually, I already mentioned this one, was hire two full-time positions as well as a consultant. Staff is recommending the hiring of one full-time employee, which would not take effect until this upcoming fiscal year. That's why there's a job description provided in the council item. And in the interim, and the funds are available, would be to go out to request for proposals to hire a GIS consulting firm to provide support for existing GIS program and when the full-time employee is brought in. You'll notice in the staff report, there's a number of advantages and disadvantages listed in our current system. One improvement we did make, based on Vestra's recommendations, was we did purchase and install Esri, our GIS software, which is state-of-the-art stuff. It's used nationwide. Even I'm familiar with it, which is a surprise. So that was a great plus. Our deficiencies, you know, the advantages, there's five advantages to what our system currently has, but they're outnumbered five to one by the disadvantages. Some of the disadvantages relative to public safety, I know I haven't spoken to the new chief or the new, the other new chief, fire chief and police chief, but from a public standpoint, public safety standpoint, there's streets that have been installed in Turlock that it's not, they're not able to pull those up when they get a call. There's addresses that aren't available. There's a number of wishes that public safety would desire to have on that, that we're not able to provide in my real life relative to working. I was with our Development Services staff the other day discussing a sewer line that was out of city resident was wanting, brought into their property. We pulled up the GIS. We couldn't find where existing sewer lines were because it hadn't been updated. You know, so we had to go back and rely on our hard copy mapbooks that we've developed over the decades. So that's the presentation in a nutshell. I can answer any questions you might have, and I don't know if it was sufficient enough to answer Mr. Puffer's questions, or just he just wanted to see me on screen at some point.
It's probably the latter of the two.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. How many different departments utilize that GIS system?
Every department.
Every department.
Every department. It would be funded identically to how our IT division is funded. However, it will also obtain revenue through fees paid by citizens and corporations and companies that come in to do a companies that come in to do, apply for a building permit, maps, any, anything that they have to get information from the city for that, part of that fee would be adjusted to incorporate the GIS system.
All right, Mr. Puffer. This GIS, this GIS that we have, is it going to, is one of the plates going to be the condition of the streets, the surface condition of the streets?
It will have that ability, yes.
So this, I can't remember how many hundreds of thousands of dollars were paid for a truck to drive around Turlock. That information will be downloaded into the GIS?
It has that ability to do so.
Are, are we going to take advantage of that?
Well, through the GIS coordinator that would be hired, that information, all of the, all of these other items that are on the wants, needs and desires, that would be all prioritized and installed into the GIS.
Okay, and the staff that we're hiring will be, it, what, what fund will it come out of? Is it?
As, as in I, in the, our information technology division, it's funded through the number of users that are within each department. For instance, in IT, it's based on how many computers each department has, so they're charged based on those workstations. Similarly, it would be done for GIS in that same manner. So it would be a, a combination of funding from enterprise, general fund, non-general fund and non-enterprise funds, as well as fees collected from the outside.
And then if we have, if we have a full-time employee in that position, who I'm going to assume is somebody who knows about GIS because it's a coordinator, what will the support services be then?
One person can't do all of the, the functions of, that's needed to adequately perform on the GIS system. The outside consultant that's hired would provide those support services, doing a lot of the data entry, a lot of the menial information entry, that sort of thing. I mean, we're not going to pay somebody approximately $160,000 a year to, to enter how many manholes we have and on what street they are. That'll be done by our consulting firm.
And we can't hire college students part-time to, to do that at a less rate than?
Well, the difficulty is we need to be comfortable that we have the quality assurance as well as the expertise and backup, so that if they run into a problem, it's because they didn't know what they're doing, we would have somebody who's accountable.
But wouldn't that be the job of the GIS coordinator?
Technically, yes.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Madden. Bring it back, there are two motions and two resolutions.
I have some comments as well.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Mr. Puffer, for pulling this item, and thank you, Mr. Madden, for speaking to it. I've been, I've been harping on this since our last full-time city manager, and I know that we, our resources looked a lot different back then, but I think there's, this is a huge opportunity to have a partnership with Stanislaus State. I know personally, multiple students who their senior project was adding to Stanislaus State's GIS system and adding the, every species of every tree that's at, on Stanislaus State. Stanislaus State is an urban forest we have in our backyard, in case you, anybody didn't know, due to the diverse amount of species of the tree that there is. So I know that there are students there that would love to have the experience, and I know that staff time with, with this large of a lift is going to be a lot, hence why we're hiring full-time managers to do so, and even preferring a master's degree within these, within these positions. So I understand that there's a consultant, I understand we're going to have additional full-time staff, but there's going to be a lot of, of, uh, very tedious work, and I know that there is an opportunity here to work with the, those that know how to do this in the GIS system at Stan State, and I, I hope that they're the same. So I just want to add that to staff, whoever's going to be taking this on, have a conversation with the university. That's all I'm asking. Put it in the job description that they're required to have a conversation with someone at Stanton about this, because I think it would help. We don't want to reproduce efforts, and we want to give opportunities to those that are, is our future workforce, so, thank you. And with that, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Both motions and both resolutions?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll second both.
We have motion and a second for all the four items.
Call the roll. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
Yes, passes three zero. There are no final readings, there are no public hearings, and the action item nine A is selling property at 513 North Palm. Ms. Ramos.
I just dropped something in that hole. All right, so, good evening, mayor and council. Before you tonight is a request to declare the property at 513 North Palm Avenue as surplus land. To fully understand how and why this request is being made, a history of the project and circumstances need to be provided. So, the property was acquired by the department at the request of council due to the condition and the activities that were occurring at the property. A total of three homes and other smaller structures that were on the property were demoed, and all of the tenants were permanently relocated. Because home funds were used to acquire the property, a two-year timeframe needed to be met. This meant that the same or more number of bedrooms needed to be replaced and occupied by eligible tenants within that two-year timeframe. If the two-year timeframe was not met, the project would then be considered out of compliance and deemed as the failed project, and the total amount of the home funds used for the project would need to be reimbursed to HUD. Staff looked at various ways of replacing the units by using the funding that was available to us at the time, and different projects were proposed to council at various times, but due to either lack of funding or neighborhood opposition, the units were unable to be replaced. Oh my goodness, sorry. That's not my presentation. They were unable to be replaced within that two-year timeframe. Staff met with HUD to request an extension to that timeframe, but the request was denied, and the required repayment of the home funds from a non-federal source was requested. The only non-federal source that was available to us at the time was the general fund. But because of the city's financial position, we held off on the repayment until we were able to identify another proper source to repay the funds. In 2019, the Stanislaus County Housing Authority reached out to the city for the possible development of new housing units at the site. They were going to be applying for No Place Like Home funding. That was through the state. Council approved entering into an agreement with the housing authority to construct four permanent supportive housing units if the housing authority was approved for the funding. The housing authority was awarded the funds and the request, and they requested for us to move forward with the sale of the property, but we still found ourselves having to repay those home funds. In the past year, the department received an unexpected payoff that was originally, or that originally used redevelopment funds. It's currently now known as successor agency funds. Because these funds are not federal funds, staff reached out to the successor agency expert attorneys to see if repaying the home account using these funds would be an eligible activity. They confirmed that it was an eligible activity, but in order to use the funds, the city would need to first declare the property as surplus land. And if the council approves the declaration as requested, housing will forward the resolution to HCD for its review before selling the property to the housing authority for the construction of the four permanent supportive housing units. The property that we are selling to the housing authority, we currently, we put the sale price at the 292,000, and that's based on the monies that we have to repay back to HUD. The appraisal that we did, the only appraisal that we have in file was the one that was conducted into, or that was prepared for us in 2008. Property values were higher then, unfortunately, that, they came in at 275,000. Right now, right now, we're looking at about 250 per acre for, for bare land. This is considered commercial land, so that might even be lower, but because when we sell a property, we usually look at what is the property that, or the monies that we put into it, and that's usually what we sell it at, and that's why we're looking at the 292,000. If the resolution is approved, staff will be able to reimburse the local home account 291,951 dollars and 49 cents. Staff will provide documentation of the repayment of, of the non-federal funds to HUD. This will clear HUD's monitoring finding without the use of the general funds. The repaid funds will be committed to, or may be committed to other eligible home projects consistent with the city's annual action plan. Staff recommends approval, staff recommends council approve the request as we will not only clear a finding without using any general fund, but the city will be able to create four permanent supportive housing units. If you have any questions? I'm sure you do.
Question to Ms. Ramos. Councilmember Larson?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ramos. Other than this use, or this, yeah, I guess, use of the designation of surplus, what other, what other types of land is declared surplus in our city?
What HCD defines as surplus is land that the city is not able to use at the time. So right now, I mean, since, because we haven't had any use for it, the only ones who have used it are the church that use it as parking and/or TID or PG&E or, or sometimes other departments have asked us to, to, to allow us, or allow them to use the, the site to, to park their, their vehicles for construction or some work that's going to be done in the area. But the city hasn't used it, or doesn't have any use. So that's what HCD determines as surplus land.
So if you declare a piece of land surplus, does it tie your hands to use it for anything else in the future? Or if you wanted, we would want to change a designation? I'm wondering if there's any other implications in just being eligible for this transaction that would tie us later for using that piece?
That would only be, we only would deem it surplus land if we're going to use the RDA or the successor agency funds to repay it. If we use other funding to repay it, then it will not need to be determined as surplus land or labeled as surplus land.
But it'll keep that designation even after it's repaid, correct? That piece of land?
It will.
Yeah, so, so I'm wondering, even after this, if this were to be approved, would it being declared a surplus piece of land stop us as a council or stop us from a city from being able to, I don't know, do anything? Will, will it have any implications such as that? I guess that's my question. I'm wondering, maybe, I don't know if Katie could answer, or maybe George?
I think George might have an answer for that. I wouldn't know.
Mr. Land Use.
Ah, there we go. He gets all proud.
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure about this, but I think that if it, if the city found a use for it in the future, you know, the designation could be changed. I mean, the, this designation is just, we don't have a use for it now and haven't had a use for it.
Right. Perfect. And that's only because we're looking at using those RDA funds to, to replenish it. But if we don't use the RDA funds, then, I mean, we have to, excuse me, we have to replenish those funds using some type of non-federal source. That was right now the only non-federal source that we have available to us, and we would like to clear that finding with HUD as soon as we possibly can. We've been holding it up.
And I know you said in the forens, also articulated here, but just to be really clear, how did we identify the source of funding again? The successor agency and how this?
The, the successor agency, we just happened to receive that repayment from Cherry Tree. They were the ones who paid us off from a loan that we had done back in the early 2000s. And so we had that money available, and so, you know, we looked at that as a possible method, and once we researched it, or once we had the attorneys research it, and they found that it was an eligible activity, because there were going to be units being built on it, and that's the key. If there are going to be, if there are not going to be units, affordable units being built on it, then we can't use that. That's the, the only caveat that HCD had for us.
Question? Questions? When was the demo completed on this?
I believe the demo was in two, late 2007 or early 2008.
So the appraisal that we have, is that inclusive of the home on the property, or was it?
We have an appraisal for the home, when the homes were on there, and they were, I don't know if you wanted to consider them homes. They didn't add much, actually, the appraisal came in at 270, if I'm correct, if I remember correctly.
270 with the?
270 with the homes.
With the structures?
With the structures.
Okay, so the appraisal that you're talking about that was completed in 2008 for 275, that was without?
With bare land.
Okay. And that is the last?
That's the last appraisal. We can't spend any more money on it. If we were to do another appraisal, then we'd have to commit more funds. We would be committing more funds to a project that it's already considered failed, and we were not able to do that.
Can we do it out of general fund? Can we?
We could.
Because the values, property values in 2008 were considerably lower than they are today, and without a full-blown appraisal by a licensed appraiser, I, I don't know if your 250,000 dollars per acre, or 250 dollars per acre for bare land, this is commercial zoning?
Commercial.
Okay, that's going to be a higher value than housing bare land, so.
Okay.
I'm guessing that the 292,000 that we're paying ourselves back is probably low. Do we know what the ramification is if we don't pay ourselves market value?
If we don't pay it?
Correct, yeah, if we, if we undersell the property.
There, as long as we are building affordable units, our, there's nothing in the guidelines that say that we have to sell at market value or above market.
We're not building the units.
We're not, but, I mean, when we sell it, we, we, our programs do allow it to sustain losses, as long as there are affordable units and eligible applicants or eligible tenants in those units.
Have we reached out to anybody else to see if they were interested in purchasing the property for some other, I mean, Stanislaus?
Not since the, the housing authority approached us. Yeah, we had had other agencies prior to that who had provided us proposals. We came to the council, the neighborhood, you know, and then the church and some of the other, you know, there were other issues, and there weren't, they were requesting additional funding, but because we didn't meet that timeframe, we couldn't provide them additional funding to assist them with the building of those units.
So then are there any caveats to selling the property to the Stanislaus Housing Authority, such as they must?
Prevailing wage.
Well, prevailing wage, number one, but number two, can they have to, can they make a demand, if you will, for only Turlock citizens to be in those houses?
No, because it's fair housing, they can give priority to Turlock residents, but we cannot, based on our funding, we cannot only serve Turlock residents. It is for any low-income person that, because it could be a person who's working here or who's studying, who lives somewhere else and is coming, family here and wants to be closer to family. I mean, persons just want to move. You know, we can't discriminate against anyone who's wanting to move or live in Turlock.
But since they're coming from Turlock funds, I would like to see some sort of preference that?
Well, we can do a preference. We can ask for, for a preference. We cannot, if there is no more Turlock residents that are meeting that criteria to live in those units, and in the waiting list, there's another family who, or person who lives, let's say, in Patterson and wants to move in, into the unit and is eligible, then, as long as they are eligible, then they can.
So goes by a waiting list that?
It just depends. I'm not sure how the housing authority is going to do it. You know, I, I, I honestly don't know.
Okay, so I would really like to see Turlock citizens get?
Preference.
Preference, because this is money that's coming from Turlock, so, and, and if we're forgiving this loan, basically, we're paying for the land, so I think that our citizens should get first priority.
And we have. I know that, like, with the, the homes and the properties that we sell to the nonprofit agencies, we do request that they give priority to Turlock residents first, and if there aren't Turlock residents available to, to fit or to meet the guidelines for those homes, then they go to the next eligible applicant. But we do, we do request that, that is the preference for those units.
So what happens if we don't approve?
Um, there's, I mean, we just won't be able to replenish, and we still will have to pay the 291,000 dollars back to HUD, but we would need to have general fund pay it unless we can find an alternative source.
Is there a deadline for that?
It was requested a long time ago, a couple of years ago, actually. Yeah. We've been putting them off.
Probably requested back in 2005, if it was a two-year timeframe.
Yeah, the monies are actually not going back to HUD. They're They're going back to our local home account. So, we can, I mean, we just need to provide proof to them that that money was replaced into the home account. And then we can turn around, oops, I'm following Dan's, Dan's. That, um, we can use that money the, the following day for another home activity in Turlock.
Any other questions? All right, let's open it to the public. Anyone wish to speak?
Uh, if I understand this correctly, it sounds like it's excellent opportunity for us to get four affordable homes here in Turlock. We need the housing. I remember when it was, I, I drove by there a lot because I could use that route to go right to the post office. So, I saw the building. It was nice to get it out of there or the buildings that were there. It has been residential. It's in a residential area. And it would be perfect if we could put four low-income homes in that area. And I, I would think that Turlock residents would gladly grab that because there are a lot of people who can't afford the people. We've got all the people going into Amazon. They could, they could use that possibly. So, I think it's a great opportunity for our city to follow what's being suggested here by staff. Thank you.
Mr. Bridegroom?
And just for clarification, these would be, uh, permanent supportive housing units?
Thank you.
Yes, so that's what I thought also. It's not going to be low come in, what did I say? Low income.
They are low income. They are permanent supportive services for low-income families or households.
Right. Okay. So, I seem to remember this, I don't know how many months ago, back in 2021, it first came forward and then it was pulled and I forget when it was, in the summer or something other like that. So, I've got a number of questions. Number one, um, I agree, a, an appraisal back in 2008 seems to me to be a very, that was a very low period, um, for property values. Okay? So, um, you would think that the property value would be substantially higher now. So, it may very well be above the 291 or 93.
92.
92, in between. 292. I at least bracketed it. Thousand dollars that we own. So, that's one comment I have. It also seems to me that effectively what we're going to be doing is bypassing the local residents and their input and wishes that we're going to sell this property to the county. And the county has already determined they're going to put in, you know, these permanent supportive housing. Did I get that right?
Permanent supportive housing unit. And it's not the county. It's the Housing Authority. Stanislaus County Housing Authority.
Wow. Okay. Stanislaus County Housing Authority. Okay. Basically, it's not the city council or the, the Turlock City Planning Commission who would be hearing it. It's not the city council who's, who's going to be hearing it. It's going to be Stanislaus County, a body in the Stanislaus County that is, um, either has already determined this. I don't know if, um, the local public had any input on this or not. I, I would wonder. Okay. I, I kind of see that as, a lot of people are not going to be happy. I also seem to remember from many months ago when this was on the agenda and it was pulled that, uh, you talked about the tennis being relocated. This is more just a complaint. If I seem to remember right, it was like $80,000 per couple or something or another like that.
Right around there.
Right around there. Per family. So, the city paid a family to move. Is there some way I can get in on that deal and get $80,000? Is there some, you know, do I have to maybe let my place fall into total disrepair and, and become more of a bugger nose than I already am, you know? And get that type of deal and so I can sell my house and buy a better one somewhere? I don't know. So, I'm complaining. I know. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Cheryl? Sitting in the back, you're throwing everybody off.
Yeah. Hi. So, um, I, I'm a little surprised by your description and unfortunately, I did not do my homework, but, um, I had looked into this and I was actually the one that asked to pull it last time when it was on the consent calendar. And, and I did quite a bit of research on this, but I didn't refresh my memory before today. But I'm not sure where we're getting the two years because if I remember right, we bought it in 2003 or '04. And we had, didn't do anything with it for nine years. And then they said, "All right, you got to pay us back." And so, he says, "Oh, no, please." And they gave us an extension for another 10 years and we didn't do anything with it. And so, they said, "All right, pay us back or we're not giving you any more funds." And Maren Pitt at the time said, "Wait, whoa, 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 we want more funds. So, let's sell it." Well, the, what, and I think it's the 292, but what she wanted to sell it for, there was the price we paid plus we paid, I mean, the taxpayers paid, right? To tear down the houses. Plus, they added curb and gutter and sidewalks. So, they have so much more money into this, the taxpayers do, than what we're wanting to sell it for. And it doesn't, I, I, I just feel as a taxpayer like, I guess, probably a little too strong, but I feel like this is criminal against the taxpayers. And we're just wanting to do this because, in my opinion, I don't know where the two years came from, but I think it's been closer to 20 years that we haven't really acted on this. And I, it seems like a stopgap so that the city can get more taxpayer funds to do something else. And I, thank you for bringing up that commercial land is at a higher value than residential. Thank you for bringing up the facts that, um, we should get it reappraised. Housing is valued higher now than it was in 2008. 2008 was pretty close to the highest point, but we have rebounded. And I think that we need to be smart. This is other people's money, partly mine, by the way. And, um, I, yeah, just, um, I, I feel like this is, is, well, we just want to get out of this so we can get other money so we can spend it on something else. And I'm not, I think we need to do our research. And, um, forgive me for not looking up all the numbers because I looked them up before. I have them in my notes, but, um, there's something really wrong here. And, um, and what I was told at the time was, well, you know, it wasn't me that bought it. But that's okay. We can try to rescue where we are at. And, um, so, I, I just think, um, we need to do the best thing for the city as a whole. And, and I don't know what that is, but I don't think that it's dumping this property significantly less than its value. I, I don't know what the right solution is. And, and maybe it is falling through with our original plan. Maybe that is the right solution. But, but please, look at all of it and thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
You said the land is zoned commercial there?
Mr. Puff, we're going to do it this way. I liked you last time, but can you just ask the questions and then we'll finish up?
I'm sorry. You're right. I, I, well, first off, I never did get an answer on what's happening with Golden State street.
We'll get that.
Second, the land is zoned commercial, which surprised me because it's around all residential. But if it's zoned commercial, wouldn't the Stanislaus County Housing Authority have to get it rezoned to housing before they can buy it? Or, or is it just going to be, they're going to buy it and then they're going to go to our planning commission and attempt to get it rezoned and maybe not get it? I understand what people are saying about what's the value now. We had, last time, we had a similar group value. Their, um, 20-unit subdivision on Montana at $100,000 a lot. And I don't know how they got that number. It sounds to me like the hard costs here excluding moving the people, uh, the hard costs are 292,000 for four very small lots. That doesn't seem like an unreasonable price. I mean, it's, it's a, the city just bet wrong or it got wrong. Stuff happens on that. But I'm really interested on the whole zoning thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's close the public hearing. Can you speak to the zoning?
I can address some of those. Yes. So, we can request an appraisal. That's not an issue. We can actually even request the, we can hold on the sale to the Housing Authority if that is your wish. And then we can come bring, get the appraisal, bring it back, and then we can, we can separate the two items if you, if you want to do that. I mean, which sounds like it would be a better, a better thing to do.
It is zoned?
I, we'll get the zoning. We'll get the appraisal. We'll get it, we'll get everything cleared up.
I can speak to the zoning if you'd like. The, the property is owned office residential, which is our, OR zoning is one of the downtown zoning districts. And so, it does allow for residential uses as a permitted use. The commercial part is that there is also some office allowance in that zoning district, but residential is an allowed use. The commercial that could be allowed in that zoning is very limited per the OR zoning district.
Thank you, Katie.
So, Ms. Ramos, is there any reason that we just don't build homes on it?
And we can. We can.
We have the money.
In 2000, we haven't built any because we didn't have the money to do that.
We have the money now.
We have the money now. We did, um, in 2019 when, um, this item was brought to council, um, to do the no-place-like-home or to go into the agreement with the Housing Authority. The agreement was, um, that they would apply for the funds to build specifically at that location. You know, um, we would have to go back and, um, look at that agreement and see how we can, um, get out of that if that is possible. So, we would need George's assistance on that. He would look at that. You know, but that, I mean, if we can, um, get out of that, then we can definitely build the units ourselves.
We have an agreement with them already?
I'm sorry?
We have an agreement with them already?
Uh, the agreement, the, was that we would, um, apply with them for the no-place-like-home and it was contingent on the property being sold for four units.
Was that a sales agreement or was that just a, like?
It was, it was not a sales agreement. It was just the agreement to apply. Um, I'd have to go back and check. I just saw the agreement. I didn't read it. It was in January of 2019 when it went to council. So, I'd have to go back and look at the actual agreement.
Okay. Yeah. We would definitely need to know if that's an actual agreement or if that's just a letter of intent.
Because I know it was to apply specifically for those.
The law abhors restraints on alien ability. That's what I remember from my real property class.
It does.
Yeah.
Wow. All right.
I guess one thing to add is that the Housing Authority, there was a question about public review process, did apply for a minor discretionary permit. So, the adjacent property owners were notified of the proposal of the property to be developed with four units. So, they do have an approved land use entitlement, um, through the planning division for those four units.
Thank you for that, yes. Guess you had another question, Councilor?
And then other questions that were asked were, uh, the tenants or the costs of the, of the units that were there. The only money that has to be repaid back at this time or that needed to be repaid back was, um, the home account. The CDBG monies that we had into the property were to put in the curb, gutter and sidewalk. And because of benefits and it was installed and it is being used in an eligible area, we didn't have to repay that money. The RDA funds at the time paid for the relocation of the families. With any federal funds, when we purchase a property and we are having to displace families, we are required to pay permanent relocation to the families. We have to pay 48 months of rent from the difference from what they currently pay to where they are going to. That difference is what we have to pay using our funding to permanently relocate them. Because we were acquiring it, we had to pay that relocation. We used the RDA funds for that. So, uh, the only funding that wasn't used, um, by an eligible family or for an eligible activity was the home funds. And that's the only funding that has to be repaid back, which is the $291,000. So, that's where the, the difference of the money came from. And the reason that we had brought this to council, we're bringing it to council and then pulled it was because when, when we were looking at the, um, having the funds being repaid back by the successor agency, um, we had not reached out to the successor agency consultants to see if this was an eligible activity and to make sure that we could do it. That's why we've been holding off on that and that's why it's taken this long. But we did acquire the property in the early 2000s and it has been a long time. HUD has been patiently waiting for us to pay this money back. But, you know, we're finally trying to clean these activities up and move forward and get some housing units that are desperately needed in our, in our city built. So, that's that question. Once again, the selling for less than the value, we can order the appraisal. We can hold off on the agreement or selling to the Housing Authority. You know, if you want to separate the surplus land resolution and then the motions to sell the property, we can do that in two separate items. And we can, once we have that information regarding the value, we can bring it back. Okay? We still have, once we get the, um, the resolution to HCD, they have 30 days to review it and respond, um, you know, to make sure it's in compliance. We have to have a plan and, um, we can say that we're just going to be building the affordable units, whether it's with the Housing Authority or, um, our department or, you know, or the city building them or reaching out to another developer, whichever way. As long as we can build affordable units, uh, HCD would be happy with that.
Councilor Larson?
And I think those are all questions.
I, I might have, I have a couple more just based on the, the recent discussion. I can speak to, I'm growing up in this area, it being in my district and being a, a very noticeable and remembered part of the canal walkway growing up. That, but, but the improvements have been significant, I think, for the individuals around that area. Even though it is a flat piece of dirt right now, it has curb and gutter and it looks nice and there's a lot of potential there. So, from my perspective, the sooner we can put something on there, I think, is the, is the best for everybody in that area. So, I, I don't know if I, I could go as far, at least from somebody who might not understand the intricacies of what paid for what. I, I think someone would, would be appreciative of how far we listened, came since what it was, even though it was like that a long time ago. When we're talking about getting it, uh, up to the current value and then we, so we do go for an appraisal and then we, um, offer that to the successor agency, is there potential where they would say, "Okay, well, that's too much. We're not going to," uh, we wouldn't be, we're not going to pay that or we're not going to meet that, the new appraised value?
The Housing Authority?
Yeah.
Yeah. It is possible.
Okay. And so, on that, um, even if, if they did approve it, they still, that would mean that they, it's only going to be used for, um, the housing designation that we've talked about earlier. There's no other eligible use for it.
Oh, I mean, it has to be, I mean, we have to put, we have to replenish the bedrooms that we removed.
Right.
So, I mean, they could be, as long as there are bedrooms in whatever we place there, whether it's transitional, affordable housing, um, you know, it, it can be anything. We just have to replace the bedrooms.
I guess I wanted, I want to address the?
Would you mind?
Meaning the, the housing that was there that was removed?
The housing, yes.
And where does that requirement come from?
Um, that was the, uh, home, home guidelines because of the funding that we used.
But if we're not using their money, are we still bound by that?
We, yes, because we took out the home, the home, uh, units or identified them as home units initially.
So, but I, I wanted to speak to, if it's just those four units and we were to give this to the other Housing Authority, I want to speak to the concern that Mr. Bridegroom brought about local authority. So, there still is a, a, a good amount of local authority that we would have if we did, in terms of, we have to replace those four units, but can they be above office space? Can they be, um, can they look, can we approve certain designs? I'm, I'm wondering, what is the level of control? I'm wondering, what is the level of control that we would still be able to have?
We can, we can work with the housing authority or whoever is designing. If you choose not to go with the housing authority or they elect not to to buy it for the the amount that we want, we can still work with whomever it is to design what can go there as long as we can have the units replant or the bedroom units replaced. And it doesn't necessarily have to be four bed, I mean, four units. The housing authority was just having four units because there were one bedroom. I believe there are one, one bedroom each unit. But we can have, we can put a single-family house with four bedrooms or three bedrooms. We just have to replace three bedrooms. That's it. Three bedrooms, but the housing authority was building four units.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm not used to this.
I know, you'll get there.
Before the council acts on this, I'd like to note that the motion approving the sale of loan agreement in choice has your instructions. We would not like that, would not want that to be included in the motion.
Thank you for that, the third one. The second motion, the third item.
And then just a second thought is, if we need to go get an appraisal, I think that that would be something worth thinking about. And and once we got an appraisal, we could just put a for sale sign out there on that property and see who wants to be interested in developing.
I have a question for that then. So if if that were to happen, and I'm assuming, like, we're all assuming that it would be appraised for a higher value than it currently is, would those accumulated funds, if someone did purchase the the lot from us, would be we'd be able to replenish the account that we're discussing for HUD?
Yes.
Okay, so we would just, we potentially have more coming into there?
You potentially could have, yeah. Then more than likely, we wouldn't have control over what is being built there.
Right.
We could potentially sell it to a private developer.
Correct, a developer.
Okay. And at that point, we would still have the the amount of local control that we currently hold with selling and purchasing property. Yep.
Me or you? All right, so I I'm not a fan of bureaucracy, but I feel like we're in a position where we historically buy high and sell low with no regard for the public's money. And and there should, just in my mind, there should be some rule that says you have to get an appraisal, no matter what on land, at minimum, no more than a year. But, I mean, six months seems like a normal thing. But I feel like we're just kind of like, eh, you know, it's not really our money. And you are right, Cheryl, I can't stand spending somebody else's money like that because I wouldn't do that with mine. We need to be transparent and do our due diligence. So an appraisal is like an absolute in my mind. And, you know, not as not as illo, not a guesstimate. I mean, when you put property, you fix that property and you put in additional items that make it worthy, you know, either you put a lien on the property or, I mean, we need to value that and that that was our money, and we need to get it some other way. So those are my thoughts as far as that. You got some?
I I think that's pretty clear that there's that the, I don't know, I don't know if the direction from council is really articulated in the resolution motion, in the motions here. So I don't know if we can just direct, if we can direct staff. I guess I'm looking to the city attorney at this point. I I think there's, there is, there is the will to have it be reappraised and have it come back. So, and that's not articulated.
You can always make suggestions, yeah.
Are they getting listened to?
Well, I I believe that we should do this right. I mean, we should do it transparently, and we should do it according to what any business person would do. They would obviously get an appraisal. I think we need to get that that appraisal. Without that, we don't really know what the value of this property is. Could be less, could be more. Thank you, Katie, for for clarifying the zoning. After we get that appraisal, then I think we can decide what to do. We need, we need to know if that's a contract with with the housing authority or if it is a letter of intent with the housing authority, because it makes a big difference in. A letter of intent isn't, isn't a contract, it's just a letter of intent. You want to do this. A contract is something that then we'll need to to get out of.
Actually, I I have it here.
Okay, and I don't like surplus land. I don't think that any.
The designation?
I I don't think any land is surplus. I think it's, it it has a value, it needs to be built on. I think I like the mayor's idea of building this, you know, ourselves or with a partner and putting as many low-income units as we can on it because that's where we're going to see a big improvement for our citizens is with more housing.
And it was an exclusive negotiating agreement? I just have the.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that because I don't know what we're bound up by now and what what we're, what what limits our flexibility.
What was the date?
And the only reason, actually, I think we're at a point where we're talking about no appraisal is, because there's always overlaying all of this as sort of a gift of public funds thing, right?
Right.
You sold something too cheap to a private entity, that doesn't apply, you know, like so many things in life, that that doesn't apply to transactions between the government and like nonprofits and stuff. So it's, it's just different.
What was the, what was the date on that agreement? Sorry, Donna, putting you on the spot.
For them.
Yeah, what was the, what was the date on that?
It was approved in January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
And how long is an agreement good? Okay, so can we continue?
I don't know if we can continue an item if, because it has to come back with the same motions attached, right? So we'd have to give direction, wouldn't we?
Yeah, I think we. I would think that we would need to make a motion and and vote on this item and then.
Then deny it and then it just goes fails?
Then have our our city manager bring it back at another another date.
Okay, so I need the resolution to motions.
Okay, so we motion to approve.
Then we'll fail it. Both, we just got to put it across.
Okay, yeah, because if we can't vote, because it can't come back this way. Wait, 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 if we vote no, then it can't come back this way at all. So, oh, I see, okay, so, yeah, okay, well, then second to approve it as well.
I know, it's confusing. So motion and a second, will you call the roll, please?
If we just to clarify, wait, okay, so.
No, no, no.
Right, right, but George, if this fails, it it can still come back the same way it's written?
Well, it's going to be written differently because.
But potentially, like, if something.
Well, no matter what, I bet you the dollar value, it changes by at least fifty cents.
Okay, you're right, I get it, you're right, you're right, yep, yep.
Yeah, based on what I hear, I don't think you can bring it back in this form.
Potential of it, but, all right, yeah, just the potential that we can't do that.
Add to the motion, I mean, I don't even know if this applies, but, you know, if you're a private party, you can say, please make this motion without prejudice. If any rule that you can't bring something back within twelve months, it just add to the motion in the second without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. Parlamentar, Parliamentar.
Parliamentary, yeah.
All right, are we adding that, Madam?
Yes, and so the second we'll add it too.
And then I will second both of those.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by both of them. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Franco?
No.
Mayor Booblaq?
No, it fails zero-three. Thank you, Ms. Ramos. I'm sure we'll, we'll talk to you about it again. We'll have city manager updates. Mr. Wilson, did you have anything?
Nothing specific tonight, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I would like the visitors from the Modesto City Fire Department, who are now our administrative agency, to stand up and introduce themselves.
Good evening, council. I wanted to introduce our new deputy chief for Turlock, Chris Jelnik. He joined us last week, and I'll let him do his bio and fill you in.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor, council. It's nice to see you. I'm honored to be a part of the Turlock family. It's been a really nice, warm welcome. So I hail previously from the city of Manteca. Manteca Fire is a shift battalion chief. But I spent most of my career up on the north coast, up in Eureka, way up on the corner of the state. So a little bit of a change coming here, but my wife and I really love living in the valley and I'm looking forward to building relationships with all of you here in Turlock and within the community. So thank you for the warm welcome.
That's pronounced Jelnik?
Jelnik, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. All right, appreciate it, welcome. All right, then, just nothing else, Mr. Wilson, so Ms. Ramos? Your backup, ma'am.
I'm backup. Okay, I just wanted to offer an invitation. The the city of Turlock and the Turlock-Stanslos County Home Consortium will begin developing its fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. The annual action plan outlines the city and the consortium's housing and community development needs and provides a one-year action plan on how the city and the consortium intends to use its funding in order to address those needs. These plans, which include the CDBG and the home funds for Turlock and the Turlock County Home Consortium, identify community development activities designated, designed to address the needs of low and moderate income persons and families. To determine those needs, the Housing Department, in conjunction with the county, will be holding public meetings to receive public comments. An ad will be placed in the Modesto B announcing the opening of the comment period by April fifth. The ad will state that the comment period will begin on the seventh of April and conclude on the sixth of May. This notice is well in advance of the public comment period, but we wanted to get everyone thinking about how these funds should be used for the upcoming year. Historically, we haven't received much comment from the public. In hopes to receive better public participation, we will be holding two Zoom meetings. The first meeting will be held on Saturday, April ninth, at ten a.m. And the other on Thursday evening, on the thirteenth, at five o'clock. Comments can be submitted to staff at any time during the comment period, either by phone, regular mail, or email. The public hearings, the city and the county will hold public hearings to receive the comments and consider adoption of the corresponding twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plans. The first meeting will be for the county, and that will be on May third at nine a.m. at the council chambers. Sorry, not the council chambers, their board of supervisors meeting in the basement. And then Turlock, we will be be presenting to our council on the tenth of May at the six o'clock meeting and in order for us to meet the May seventeenth deadline that we have to submit to HUD. Let's see, all of our information regarding the Zoom information and all of the meetings will be placed on our city website, so that way the public will be having access. But I just wanted to get that well, out there well in advance so that we we can get the public comment and interest going on these projects because we have a lot of money that is available to us. Any?
Question mark?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. No. Council items for future considerations? And council comments? Great, we will go into closed session, I'm sorry. Gang, okay, go ahead. Sorry, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to thank the Turlock Fire Department for their actions on the juror's fire. That was a big fire. Thank you, Modesto PD, thank you, Turlock PD, thank you, city staff, because we had the staff out there with some equipment to knock down a wall so they could get deeper into the fire. So thank you, everyone, that was a big fire and glad no one was hurt.
Okay, we have closed session, and should we have an item? We will be coming back, but if you read them for us real quick.
All right, first up, we have conference with real property negotiators, California Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is thirty-five hundred North Quincy Road, De Nair, California, accessory parcel number zero-seven-three-zero-zero-nine-zero-one-four. Agency negotiator is Principal Civil Engineer Stephen Fremy or Interim Municipal Services Director Dan Madden. And negotiating parties is Kurt Starkey and Christina Keen, city of Turlock. Under negotiation is price and terms of payment for the sale of property and fee. Next up is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, government, California Government Code Section 54956.9D2, one potential case. And then we have liability claims, California Government Code Section 54956.95. There's two cases. The first one is Jeff Souza against city of Turlock, and the second is Alisa Marie Hendon against city of Turlock.
All right, thank you so much. We will report, should there be something? All right, thank you so much. We will report. Should there be something?
Keep those in there.
We need them.
We are live back from closed session, Madam Clerk.
There is no reportable action.
All right, we will return. Thank you all. Good night.